Good evening, I'd like to open the planning board meeting of July seventeenth. Uh, my name is Rachel McManus and to my left is...
George Morris.
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Pete Pecos.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
And first up on the agenda is...
This is it.
Okay, our continued hearing for Walk My Pause, uh, special permit, uh...
In three minutes.
In three minutes.
Oh, what? In three minutes?
Yes.
Oh geez, you had me start, I thought we were ready.
We're still supporting your proposals.
I'm excited.
Great performance.
Oh, fifty. I'm sorry, I have that so, okay, sorry, my mistake.
So, it's about five minutes.
Uh, we don't have...
We don't have...
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna throw it to the town planner or do another time to do this?
Okay.
We throw it back to you.
Alright. Um, so, a couple things, um... We have, uh, received a letter from an attorney, Melissa Robbins, from DeShane and Farrell, PC, uh, s- uh, to, serving to formally notify the town of Newbury that a request for a site approval letter has been made by Cricket Lane LLC under Mass Housing's New England Fund Program for development of a twenty-four unit forty B fifty-five rear Pearson Drive. So, um, the process is, this, this doesn't actually start the clock ticking. Um, we need to get a letter from the subsidizing agency, which is Mass Housing, so they've, uh, submitted it to, um... And, um, Mass Housing will set up a site walk, so as soon as we get that letter, um, we'll, we have thirty days within which to submit town comments back to, uh, Mass Housing as the subsidizing agency. Um, so, we will be working with, with town council on that and, um... We'll, um... You know, it's something that, that we'll wanna discuss as, as a board with our comments. Um, I don't wanna assume that the comments are gonna be the same in terms of, of the site issues, but we'll, we'll go over those. Um, the developers have fellow named Walter Erickson. Um, he has done at least four forty Bs to date, um, that I know of. And, um, I don't know, so, I think Cricket Lane may be a new, um, you know, sort of a new corporation for the purposes of this, um, but I haven't looked at the, um, application yet. So, we're gonna ducks in a row and, and, uh, wait for the letter from Mass Housing and then be ready to go.
So, do we think this is just a transfer of, of that?
So...
The mid, you know, the last, the last project or, or...
Yeah, um, as far as we can tell, um, again, I haven't looked at the, I, I would guess that the, the architecture is probably different. I think it probably works with its own architects, but the layout is probably similar. Uh, the former forty B applicant does own the property now, so he signed the PNS. Um, and that will be one question that I will at least have, you know, to ensure that there's no, no involvement there given former issues. Um, so anyway, that will be coming, uh, that will be coming our way. Um, so again, the process is it goes through site approval, um, from Mass Housing and if Mass Housing deems that it's an eligible, uh, forty B application, they will issue a letter of project eligibility, at which point developer will submit a comprehensive plan, permit application to the zoning board of appeals. So, this B is not involved in this process, but it will be in their hands uh, once they get the eligibility letter. Uh, another thing that will be coming to the board, I've gotten a request for the next agenda from Mark DiPiero to put on an informal discussion with the board for a subdivision at one oh five High Road, which is, uh, Mr. Customs' property.
Oh.
Is that the guy who was for us a couple months ago?
Yeah, and wanted to do it too, uh...
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And he had had some informal discussions with the board previously about doing an eight-unit OSRD there. And they, they were the same, you know, same issues, getting a roadway in there and things like that, so, um... We'll see, um, I think under our zoning, he actually needs to, because it's more than four units, he needs to apply for an OSID, what he really wants to do is conventional. So, we'll see what he has to say on the seventh.
How much land is there in this one?
Um, I think it's total about sixteen acres, but if you recall, there's sort of like two offset rectangles.
Right.
And the back of it... Yeah, yeah, at a very narrow point. The back of it is, uh, has a lot of wetlands, it does have upland in it, but it's not contiguous and that's one of the things that Mark wants to talk about. It's also largely in the flood plain. So, the really good developable land is, is up front, but for them to set aside fifty percent of that upland as open space, he thinks it's not gonna be workable, he's looking for twelve units. So, we'll see how that goes. Um, and I think it's six fifty now, if you wanna, I can pick up the rest of it later.
Six fifty now.
Okay. Okay, so now, we're gonna continue the public hearing for Walk My Pause LLC, special permit application for animal daycare, daytime only, at ninety, Newbury Port Turnpike, map R thirty-six, lot nineteen, property owner eighty-six, Newbury Port Turnpike, realty trust, Anthony Barberas, trustee, business owner, applicant, Felice Bonka, Walk My Pause LLC.
Hello.
I'll support him from afar.
Yes.
And the draft decision is in your packets.
Right, and, uh, I assume that you've had a chance to review that?
Yes, we went over it. Everything is there as we discussed.
Okay. Alright, so, you don't have anything to add? To track, multiplying?
No.
Does the board, does everybody had a chance to review that?
Yes, yep.
And do we have any further comments on it?
I do not. Nor do I. Must've been a very low written decision.
They always are, okay. Well, given that?
I need to understand, um, just wanna make sure we're understanding condition number six.
Number six.
Uh, that there will be no more than sixteen dollars total on property, anytime inclusive.
Yes, no, sixteen dollars, at any time, no, nothing longer than that.
Okay. I don't think I have any other comments.
And the hours of operation are as we discussed last time?
Yes.
Seven thirty AM to six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yes.
Monday through Friday?
And then Saturday is from eight to fifteen.
And then, nothing on Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's Day? You had actually written New Year's Eve, I think, in your narrative, but I assumed you really meant New Year's Day, so that's what I, that's what I put in here.
Nothing on Sunday.
And nothing on Sunday, okay. Um, what about other legal holidays? Do you work on, you know, like Columbus Day or...
Uh, yes, yeah, because a lot of my customers, you know, take the day trips and go all the way down.
So, do you want your motion?
So, I guess there are two things that the board needs to do. One, if, uh, if you are satisfied with all the information we need, is you to close the public hearing.
Then do a motion.
And then you can do, you can deliberate and...
Well, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any further discussions to have?
I don't.
Yeah, nothing, right?
Hearing none. Then do I hear a motion to approve a decision?
I would, go ahead.
Okay.
I move to approve the decision as presented by the town planner.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
So, what is next?
So...
Oh, sorry.
Um, so, what's next is, um, I have here the signature pages for the board members to sign. I've actually got three copies of it and two words written there. There's, um, since it requires a, a four face majority, I had record of vote goes approving, and those not approving, so basically there's everybody who's not approving. So, if you wanna sign and then date this on the bottom of the file with the town clerk tomorrow. Uh, there's a twenty day appeal period, it's twenty calendar days, it starts the day after it's filed, so that will start on Friday. Um, and then, uh, you'll be notified when the appeal period is done and if there's no appeal, you can pick up the certificate of clerk stating that there was no appeal as well as a copy of the decision and report that at the registry of deeds.
Okay.
So, that's that. Um, and I do, here, um, under my standard line, required to send a notice of a special permit, um, grant out through all the vendors. So, that does notify them that the appeal, um, has started. It gives them the date that it's starting for the town clerk. Um, and, so... Yeah, giving the crowd some crowds here. So, that's the process.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the time, welcome.
So, then the next step after that will be, um, the business license for you all. And I think, Tom, where that will be addressed by the selected after the appeal period is over and we've actually got this written, it's been reported through the registry. So, I'm glad that that's...
And so, how is that going with that? Sorry, is that for the new business here before you hand it off?
No, I think it's generally a good idea, they like, um, you know, for people who have a new business, they like to have, have it come before the board. Um, and, um, I think the date will be whatever that, well, Tuesday is in August. So, um, most likely twenty seven. And, um, now, I know the town clerk has been voting on to the business license, so, you know, now that she'll know that it's in the process, so she'll make sure that it gets up to the selected and on the agenda, but all...
And, and do we, uh, how often do we adjust the number of tags? Um, dog tags?
Oh, for like...
For the license, yeah.
Yeah.
But like, do we, uh, fifteen, you should get sixty?
Um, you can talk to the town clerk about that.
Yeah, let's say it more, yeah.
Alright, I mean, it sounds like it'll be a while before you, you get, get those. Um, so, I don't know, I think they're, um, done on an annual basis, so you could continue with the ten that you have planned for now, maybe do sixteen for next year, but if you think you'll be growing before that, it's really up to you to talk to the town clerk.
Yeah.
Thanks, welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Stay dry.
Yeah, you too. Well, now we have fifteen minutes, so, shall I continue with the, uh...
Sure.
Town clerk?
Yes.
So, uh, yesterday, uh, I was gonna go to the, uh, the three month map thing. Uh, Sam said he was gonna go to cover both communities that he works for, rural and newbury, and actually to make it. So, um, we will get the, the maps if we have them, I was gonna bring them, uh, to everybody.
Yeah.
To review tonight. My understanding is it's mostly the newbury as opposed to coastal. So, as soon as, as soon as we have those, I will get them and, uh, share them with the board.
Oh, you are on, yeah.
Um, I don't know, but they're online, I was gonna check that, maybe you had a chance to do that. Um, and the other thing I wanted to, um, fill you in on, and this is online and I will send you a link. I, um, registered for a webinar yesterday that was, um, given by the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions on solar sighting in Massachusetts. And, um, it was interesting, uh, as it turned out, it wasn't as informative as I thought it might be just because we've already considered a lot of the things that, that they were talking about. Um, they talked about it particularly in terms of the smart growth program. One of the things I didn't realize, if you recall when we talked about it before, um, there were about six categories in the smart growth program that would be, uh, would not receive any credit. That was if they were, uh, located in wetlands, prime forest land, prime agricultural land, um, and a few other locations. And most of those were actually taken out of the final draft of the smart program. Um, so now it's, it's resources that are protected and holidayed, such as wetlands and, um, I think land that's in open spaces and agricultural preservation restriction and things like that. So, we can't rely on that as part of our criteria, uh, necessarily. Some of the statistics that they provided were interesting. They talked about the fact that, um, a lot of the arrays, as far as they can tell, the ground mounted installations, large scale, have gone in forested areas, I think it's like sixty-one percent or something like that. Yeah. Which was, which was quite surprising. But, uh, they did say they were gonna get the PowerPoint up on the NACC website, so I will over that to all of you in case you're interested and we should pick up, pick that up at, at some point. Uh, another thing that we're gonna have to deal with, um, hopefully for town meeting, I'm gonna talk to town council about this on Monday, it is. Um, don't know if you all remember the, the, um, A and R that was, uh, endorsed for the two seventy-seven High Road property, was down at the corner of Cottage Road and High Road, uh, dividing that into six parcels. And, um, the, um, the trustees of the property have basically filed an appeal against our opinion that the parcel with the house and the barn on it needed to get a variance because it became, it lost any grandfathering that it had because it was too close to the lot lines anyway. Um, they were successful in their appeal. Um, and part of the, uh, reasoning, uh, for their appeal and the judge's decision was a footnote that's in our zoning about, um, if a closer lot line is already established, or a closer building line is already established, um, then our zoning dictates, which is the twenty feet, um, then the structure would be allowed.
So... In any proximity of the, if, if a, if the line had been established anywhere in the town or just...
Not anywhere, but in, in that neighborhood.
Proximity to the...
Right, so, the, I guess it was interpreted that because it was already closer, that footnote allowed it already to be closer than, than the twenty feet.
Was it the intention of the footnote?
No, no, it's not intentional.
So, does anyone argue that?
Um, but yes, I mean, our council argued that.
Right. Because usually, that's why you would cut the footnote.
Right, right.
Just to stay aside from that.
But, you know, it's, it, I guess it was felt that it was ambiguously worded enough. So, we're gonna have to update that to really clarify what the, what the intention is.
Right.
And so, I will talk to Lisa about that on Monday. We, we will be having a fall town meeting, so I'll work backwards in terms of the schedule that we need to, to meet.
So, can I play that out a little bit?
Yeah.
So, let's, we, let's say we clean up our work, uh, and then come to a policy. Does the town then challenge that, that standing decision?
Um, I think at this point it would not be worth it to do this, to, yeah. I mean, we could, we have, we have many days to appeal, but yeah.
I'm just, you know, done with, something else.
You know, my, my concern is what that decision means. Um, you know, consistently, um, we've been treating any, any change of a lot line for a pre-existing legal non-conforming parcel. Um, if there were non-conformities, they would lose their grandfathering, so I need to follow the council on what that means, kind of on a broader scale. You know, if this decision really can be interpreted just for this particular case, it's a broader issue.
So, the, the newly created lot with the house on it, i- is conforming in all other respects?
It was conforming in all other, other respects, it's just that structures were non-conforming.
So, what, what is, what is the intent of the footnote then?
So, I think the intent of the footnote was, I mean, say if you've got houses down in Plum Island and they're all, you know, say within ten feet of the, the street, you know, front property line, and somebody were building a new structure down there or relocating one, it could, it could match up with that ten feet instead of being twenty feet. But in this, in this case, it just doesn't, you know, it wasn't intended to apply to, to pre-existing structures in, in this way. And the house that's adjacent to it is close to the lot line, but no as close as the, the house on, at two seventy-seven is.
Play devil's advocate. If, if the lot's otherwise conforming, why, why would we get, why would we care?
Question.
You know?
But, um, you know, that's, that's been...
Because it would've been non-conforming to that lot line regarding, you know...
No, I, I understand that, but if, if it's a house that's been there forever.
Exactly.
Uh, you know, uh, well, anyway.
Anyway, council thought that it would be cleaner for them to go for relief and then it would be, it would be fine forever and ever and ever.
Yeah.
But they chose to take a different move. So, um, so I guess, um, that said, if there are any other items that, um, we feel should be addressed for the fall town meeting in terms of zoning changes, um, if you feel welcome, think about it for the next meeting and then we can discuss those. I know that there were some general, or general bylaw changes that didn't go through that we hadn't looked at, like, uh, uses animals and things like that. So, um, but I think it's probably too soon to deal with wireless. Um, we'll leave, we're talking about that.
Why have you mentioned that?
And it's too soon for solar and some, some of the other biggies that we've been talking about. So, if we wanna do some work for it, um, I can, if you'd go to the wireless stuff, if you want to. Um, I put a query out on the mass planners list, sir, um, regarding wireless communications and if there are any consultants who, um, other planners have worked with who might, might be recommended. Um, the first one I got back actually was from, uh, Karen Collard, the executive director of NPTC, very highly recommending Lisa need. So, so that was good to know. I guess when she was in the firm, I think it was, Lisa helped, um, with the wireless bylaws. So, certainly she'll be heavily involved in this. But I've gotten a recommendation from several planners and, and some of this information is in your packets for, um, a company called Isotrop LLC, um, they're in Medfield. Um, and the specific person is a guy named David Maxim. And, um, I actually received, through the mass planners list, sir, I actually received an email from, um, a guy named Steve Reese who works for Isotrop saying that they might be able to help us with this. Um, and so, in your packet, there's an email from him as well as their typical scope of services. Um, and I think they probably work on both sides, they help facilities, um, they help with sighting, they also help with bylaw review and development. So, I, um, I do have a question then to Tracy about the, the process, whether, since this is the one local person that we've got information about, whether we can, um, we'll do a sole source or if we need to issue an RFP or RQ and I, I haven't had a chance to talk to her about that.
I hate it, it's gonna depend on your estimated cost.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm assuming. And, um, I, there are also two examples of wireless communications, um, bylaws that were sent to me, one from Lynne Field and one from Tewksbury. The one from Lynne Field is from twenty fourteen, uh, the one from Tewksbury, I think is a little bit older, so they may not necessarily be totally applicable to what we're looking for, but they might, you know, provide some, uh, some food for thought, above of, you know, what we've got in our, you know. But I think they probably, I don't think they address any of the small cell stuff and things that we, we need to be looking at now. But it's a start and I was glad to get the name of a more local consultant than in Florida.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts on, on that.
Other than I would check his brother. They've been pretty good in the past.
Yeah, I know we had success there with some of the other...
Right.
So, I'll do that and see what they've got in books. And, um, I had asked Lisa previously if she had some, some bylaws that she might recommend and, and, you know, there've been so many more immediate things that we really haven't gotten back to that, but I will check with her on that as well.
Well, some of it's gonna depend on, I mean, I'm glad to see that, you know, they're gonna do a, a coverage analysis and then consider alternative technologies that are gonna make sense and, you know, advise in that regard, because that's really the big part of what you need before you start talking about bylaws.
Right, right.
You know, to, to find out the best way to make a coverage with what, for women, before we start writing bylaws for them. So, that, that, so this sounds like they do what we need, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, everybody, um, I'd say there are probably four or five people who recommended them.
Yeah.
And said that they'd interest it, so...
Good.
Or if somebody triggered times to watch movies.
And I did get a list from them, I didn't include it in your packets of, of towns that they've, they haven't worked in and it's very long.
Right, good. Well, that's embarrassing.
Yeah.
I don't know why they used so up though. What do they call themselves?
Yeah, I don't know.
Are they wireless communication consultants?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what they list themselves under. Anyway, I was, I was encouraged, I know that there's somebody, somebody out there.
Outside the sphere. You love those.
Alright.
Can we get rid of those ZB every place?
You got one?
No.
Oh.
Maybe it's more right, the ZB.
Let's see. Let's see, so, um... There was a selectment meeting last night. Okay. Um, and that really, um, there were essentially two, two things for that. One was, um, Duncan Fitzgerald from DU was there to request a letter of support for a grant application that, um, they are, um, Kimmy and Zoe Hughes are looking to put forward. They've been working on the marsh already, they're doing, they're doing MVP grant right now, looking at the marsh in terms of, I think, the ability of the marsh to attenuate storm surge. Um, and what they, as they've been working out there, they've recognized that there's some real issues around Pine Irwin Road. And the fact that the road both gets overtopped on a regular basis, but it's also creating issues in terms of tidal flow, it blocks the flow and you get ponding there and then, um, hypoxia happens and the vegetation is beginning to, to die off. Um, and it's stopping sediment travel and things like that. So, um, they're submitting a grant application for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do a study, um, and look at the feasibility of potentially putting a culvert underneath Pine Irwin Road, which would allow the, you know, the water to flow through and hopefully stops some of the issues.
Well, it's a man-made, it was a man-made problem that they're dealing with right now is to put the road in and that's what's causing the, the flooding. So, the, the idea was to put the culvert in, to have the flow go underneath and, and kind of reclaim the natural flow of the, of the tide.
And they also noted that there, you know, there was a previous road out there and there's some, some rocks out there, um, that, I think, were causing some damming issues and things like that, if I recall correctly.
They, yeah, and it's, it's like a, it's an older problem that was created, um, I can't remember exactly how long ago, but the, the rocks were put in there was it for damming reasons?
And they are recommending that those come out as part of this as well. So, this would be the initial stage, then, um, there could be future funding for actually doing, you know, con- uh, construction documents for a culvert or whatever needs to be done. And then potentially a third phase of actually getting funds for the construction itself. But it's, it's first the feasibility study.
Seven fifteen. Okay, seven fifteen?
Police station, yes.
Okay, since it is seven fifteen, we can continue the public hearing with the site plan review application for the Newbury Police Station, seven and seven R Morgan Avenue map, use of six lots, two and three, applicant owner, um, computer. So, do you have anything to say?
Uh, well, um, I do have updated documentation that, uh, has been discussed and, and there's been some edits made to... and there's been some edits made to the several documents. For minor, but they were significant in terms of what was requested, both by the conservation team and your body. These are full size plans to do. There's an extra, an extra set of the small, um, produce plants, just so you have something. And there is, there are copies of the specification of the planting, which includes the work of the eradication of the blackweed. So I can pass those around too. This is, this is just middle for me. Um, so the, essentially, as, as discussed previously, the goal was to, um, establish a methodology and process of eradication. And that would also continue as a maintenance process by the town. And so that's, that's how the specification is worded. Uh, and the, will be worded in the documents so that there's, there's a method, method that the town can then, uh, continue on after the contractor has gone. And you, you guys take over the, the site. As far as the, the minor amount of change in, in the document that was requested yesterday, just yesterday, actually, uh, by the commission was the, uh, removal of the indicated snow storage on the north side facing the, the pond. That was a leftover from the previous, uh, previous iteration. So the storage is now, snow storage is limited just to the sway of, the grass rail between the parkula and the fire station. Um, so that's a modification that was made on the drawings. I don't know of any other specific modifications other than the inclusion of and mutation of the, um, landscaping work that would be in the base bid documents versus the alternates, um, and the site improvements of the, in the alternates package. The sequence of those alternates have not been determined and, um, that's still an ongoing process, uh, spearheaded mainly by the committee. Uh, because there are a number of alternates that have been proposed in this project. So we don't know where in sequence, um, the landscaping and our site improvements will fall. Um, however, the, um, essentially the, the, my understanding is that the plan is to, if the base bid is low and the, and the alternates are within the overall budget, then there's not going to be issues. They'll be accepted and can proceed. If there's a shortfall, I think that the plan is that, that the going to town meeting and requesting the additional monies required for the alternates, whether or not that passes or what happens is a different story. But I think that's, that's the plan. But it has not been finalized to date. So I think I've touched on major points. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I had a lingering question that came up back to mind this morning. The sidewalk that goes to the street, the sidewalk for the coming out of the building. What has happened with that? Has anyone talked with the police department or the chief about how that ought to be handled like a napkin instead of just a butt curve?
I don't think that there's been any, to my knowledge, anyway, any specific discussions with the state chief regarding this.
Yeah, that was discussed at the last meeting and it sort of disappeared.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it's gonna be actually a path that goes into the street and not to have an ADA rant.
Oh, I see. I, I, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure what you, what you meant.
Okay.
Okay, um, the transition. I think that it was intended only to be a walkway from the street and I granted, I understand your, your concern totally. And I have, I mean, I certainly would imagine that if, I think part of the issue was that because there are, there were, there are no sidewalks on that.
That's right.
In the center street, that this was a nebulous sort of issue, whether or not there was, there was adequate reason to, to provide, um, whether or not. I, I hope that there's, I don't know if there's access possible off the drive once, once we're in. There must be, there must be a way and therefore.
Well, people could walk up the driveway.
Yes.
But there's a safety issue.
Um, let me just sit here for a second. I think that's a good way of saying that now it's still being discussed with the building committee.
That's how, though, the response.
Yeah, is what part of the, the response.
I suppose what could be put in as a crosswalk at that point?
It's a crossing to a residential property.
Certainly looks, it looks though. There is a, there is a, um, handicap, um, put a, no, no, I'm sorry. So yeah, the only handicap access is from the parking spot. But, um, and I think that part of the maybe, maybe. I'm trying to confirm this, but, but a part of the issue is whether that second cap placement, that additional cap placement that was, has to be installed at the east side of the tribe is in the location where that potentially would be. And I think that that may have something to do with it, but, but I, you know, I think that that's, I don't know if that's, that's the answer or not.
Well, the other question is, is that actually necessary to have that walkway there for the street?
Oh, um, if it, I see what you're saying.
It's a walkway to nowhere.
I mean, probably not because it's at Darlo sidewalks now. Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's purpose and maybe the, I think that part of the, the logic was that in anticipation of having a, an area that's, that's going to have a flagpole and a sign that people would wanna possibly, there could be a monument. Most towns wind up putting something along those lines in those locations. And I think that maybe, the idea is to, to close that and have it accessible so people can walk around it. I, again, I, I, I understand your point about the, about the accessibility. I don't see why it couldn't be added if that's what, if that's, you know, something that.
But could be no use over it exactly because there's no.
Because again, there's no.
Either in or out, so why for rent?
Okay, well.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying, um. I'm not sure I know the, the answer, okay.
I think that's for the committee, but there's just a couple of other points.
Okay. Certainly, I'll relay that to the committee, uh, on Friday and I don't, I don't think that it's necessary to continue this walk. I mean, this walk could terminate. It doesn't, so if somebody could get to this area.
Right.
And it doesn't have to go out the street. I, I understand your point.
So as far as the, uh, the alternatives, the add alt, so to speak, do we approve everything that's been proposed and then provided it gets approved by the other town entities, uh, is that how we're gonna go about that, Martha? Is we just approve sort of all the add alts now and I, I don't see that we have much of a choice, but.
Right, I mean, I think, yes, my thought was that basically the board would be approving what has been proposed, includes the, the add alternates.
Right.
And then the language and, and the decision, sort of noting that there are basements things which we absolutely need to go in now. And that the add alternates will.
I think that, that the idea was that in order to have a functioning building, the, the concern was not to miss, to miss out on the potential, you know, in other, in other words, make sure there's a contract in place where it can start. And then if need be, down the line, if it's working, be added.
I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, they don't have to turn around and come back to add, you know, other parts.
Right, I mean, I think, um, I mean, I would, I would think these are the, these are the, the final draws that are being.
Right, so unless they, unless they change one of those.
Unless they change.
Pro's.
Oh, okay.
Right, that should be good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
Right, yeah, we would have to be proposing some changes in order to.
Right, so if the board is hopeful with what's been shown in terms of, of all the, then that would be.
Yep.
I mean, we're all, you know, positive and, and hopeful that, obviously, that the bids will come in competitive and, and won't be an issue, certainly, so.
If, if it just. All, all goes to so, when, when do you think you might break ground?
Uh, well, um, hopefully by the end of September, um, usually there's about a month of, uh, secret issues. Bids will begin in, in August. By September, by the end of September possibly, uh, October most likely. But the initial phase is gonna be a lot of, as you know, a lot of clearing and a lot of issues with, with surface, uh, subsurface conditions and that will take, take some time, so. Progress won't be quick until, until the soil issues are resolved. But, but yeah, I mean, anticipation is that, that we want to be, be programmatic as soon, as soon as possible.
All right, so has everyone had a chance to read you those comments here?
Mm-hmm.
You seem to have done it, rest, everybody satisfied with? This one's, okay, good. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
No, nothing.
Everybody's read the decision and?
Yes.
Agreeable to that?
Okay, with the changes that were made in the vice draft that I came up to.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay. Do we dare? Do we dare close, do we, close the public here?
I just wanna ask the question, the issue of, of the drew raise of, of that walk. I don't know how you wanna leave that. I mean, do you wanna make the condition or something about whether or not that is in fact the final, the final design or, or, or do you wanna leave it open in any way? Should, I only wanna know this so that I can relay that information to everybody else.
Yeah, right.
Or, or your board, I don't, uh, that's up, you know, it's, it's for you to decide.
Well, my understanding would be that, that the sidewalk is approved if the owner deems to construct it as such. But I don't think we're, it's our intention to require it. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
I don't, does, do we need language to clarify that?
I don't know if you're on, on board with.
I mean, it's kind of, kind of the same thing with the, with the plantings other than the knotweed and the, and the agrovitae, you know, which we wanna see in the base bed. The other is, is approved if you, you know, if you have the will without to do it.
And would the board, um, you know, say if this is being discussed with the building committee and the building committee decides that it should come out, would that then be something that you all would wanna come before the board as a modification or do you wanna put in, add in some language?
Is it, is it minor enough, but?
It's a minor, right. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want us to have to come back.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was hoping.
I, I mean, if, if we have an enjoist letter that it's under discussion, I don't, to me, it's, it's, it's one of those things that it's sort of, uh, property owner's option, you know?
Since you are the property owner.
You are. Well, that's exactly so.
Well, not you personally, but the town.
Yeah. Others are kind of the final, final decision makers about some of these things.
So I don't know if that's something that needs to be explicitly stated in the, uh, in the decision, Martha, what do you think?
I don't know, I mean. How do you state it?
Right.
Board, board is okay with whatever the building decides to.
Yeah.
That's what makes sense.
My tendency as the decision is, I don't want the committee to determine whether that, either change should be facilitated or not. Given the flexibility to that.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, so just not even a decision.
Correct.
I, I think, I think, yeah.
I know, some of, some of these are actually noted as CDs now and probably some, some of it is still in.
Well, they, they, they are, they are CDs. We're construction documents. We're supposed to be finished now, but we're not. Well, it's okay, uh, it's, it's a process and, and there'll be tweaks of various kinds to the documents before they're issued to bid. And that's only because we need to make sure that everything is coordinated, everything is done, but correct with everybody and it's not, but we're not gonna change the result. There's not changing of any, at this point, it's more making sure that all of the details are in place. Specifics in place, you have to finish the specifications.
They will need.
So, yes, we're in the final phase.
So what are we hoping to have been done?
Uh, well, we, we, we are hoping to have them done within a few weeks because, um, we're still going through a final cost estimate check based on the finished documents so that we, we can be assured that we're still on target in terms of budget, so. Within the next couple of weeks, they should be finished. And then it's a matter of coordinating and establishing the bid date based on when we can, when the appeal period ends and then we can, we, we have to line it up so that everything is, is ready to come. And because of all the statute and advertising and there's all those timeframes have to be done.
This has gotta be advertised for.
Two weeks before, uh, before the document's available. So that, but, but I don't think you wanna advertise until after the appeals period, so in case there's an issue, you can, you can jump ahead and bid if there's a real battle. So yeah, so we have to wait for that to happen. But yes, we are finalizing the documents now.
Well, the appeal period for this is twenty calendar days and CONCON is ten, ten business days, so.
From where it's filed, right?
From the day, from the day after it's filed, starting the day after, yeah, so.
I think we figured out. I don't have it on the schedule, I mean, I think we kind of cut the, the calculation of it. We would be actually, based on, sort of, sorting everything smoothly.
Right, right, right. So we should be able to get this file tomorrow, so in the final decision and then start the clock ticking.
Road ringing, I mean, very exciting.
Well, thank you.
So. Interesting.
It was interesting, yeah, it was interesting. It always is. Every project is, is quick.
He's going through the whole file subbid process.
Oh, yeah, first file subbits, then G C bits. And hopefully they're all good because you have to come back and, and re-bid things. And that slows down, that, it's again, if everything goes right.
Right.
It's one shot deal, but. It's one-shot deal, but you never know. It's always a crutch.
You ready?
Second.
Any further comments?
Any couple comments?
Get it done.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
Do you wanna review the findings or anything, or do you just, uh?
I think we've already reviewed the findings, so does anybody feel that we should go over anything else? Anybody feel like reading?
The spec, we usually should, should asleep.
It's, it's a tame emotion.
So.
And it's, it's a decision.
So, second.
Any further comment? Last gentleman. All in favor?
I know.
All opposed?
That's, that's what's today's amendments.
Right, yes.
So we move ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please thank you for giving us some questions yesterday.
There's always last minute stuff, always.
Your fingers.
Oh, no. Authentication in this body. Yes, in the business too. Um, so I think you have everything you need from us at this point in time.
If you don't, let me know.
Yeah, yes, basically now that the public hearing is closed, I think that's kind of it, but, um, yeah, I mean, we'll treat these as the, the record drawings, basically. And, um, good to see you.
Okay, well, good night.
Right, thank you, take care.
Good morning.
We did the same very common.
The pen is gone.
Logic, yes.
The fine pens.
Okay, I'll get both of those filed tomorrow.
Nice to get them done.
Yes.
It's nice to get them done. Yes. Long term, I'm thinking. Next up will be the continued public hearing from the office. The sidewalk on the third.
What time on the third?
I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's nine.
Yep.
I'm hoping for a seventy degree weather day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be very good.
After a mild shower, so it was no dust.
Right, but not enough that your boots are sinking within a minute of clock.
And our green head season, so it's.
Seven.
It'd be good.
Hopefully. Getting nasty this year.
George is dying to hear about the rest of the selectmen maybe.
Oh, no, the only other, item on the agenda that was, uh, was, um, Mike Doyle has been across since he works for Triton, whether he can receive both, um, uh, salary from, from Triton as well as his selectmen's second. So, and they did vote to do that with the situation that he, since he's working for Triton, can't vote on any matters related to Triton, like the budget or any, any other things like that. Yeah, I think they're waiting for a, um, um, a written opinion from the ethics commission as well. And that was it for the selectmen.
Very much. Well, then we go to the conservation. Uh-huh.
I heard it was a long one.
It was another long one. Quarter below eleven. Just, so the first one, the first two, two were continued. The Rolstane, the one, uh, Shandell Drive and Rolstane. Um, still continued in the drive state. Again, there was the thing of it's not permitted and they kept going back and forth. On the fact that they're not permitted for water and sewer yet, but they still only have the fact that water and sewer renewal report says they have the capacity. They still haven't given them a, a permit and they won't until they have, um, you know, a modified utility plan showing how they're gonna connect, so. Meanwhile, they're just trying to get through CONCON and everything else keeps coming into it, I'm trying to think of. Why, I think they were still, they were still going over the, um, protection of the resource area. And while they have added the stone wall and that sort of thing to help protect, now they're going into a, a proposal for high grass so that you would discover if, if this landowner sold it to someone else, that they, if they had to keep the high grass, the chances are they would be dumping tons of fertilizer and stuff on it and running into that. So they're, they're still going over the details of how to minimize the nutrients that go into the resource. So that was continued, um, Robert Britton, the doc at, uh, one seventy-one Orson Street was approved with some conditions.
Oh, it was?
It was. Um, and that again is another complicated, uh, process because according to the engineer, they have to go to CONCON first and then after that they go to the corps of engineers and then if need be they'll go to D E P. But they have to, in order to go through that whole process, so there was a question as to whether they really are, are gonna need a chapter ninety-one license or not. And I guess that's gonna be figured out down the line, but CONCON can, you know, obviously you can get through the CONCON process and, uh, subject to them getting all the other approved permits. Um, then if, you know, they approved the town of Newbury with the, uh, snow storage change and, uh, some, predating to be determined on the knotweed management. Walter Erickson, fifty-five Pearson Drive was the N R A that was approved with the condition that the second mineral pool which they submitted information for, uh, is approved by the state. And they expect that to, to happen. Timothy Sheen for thirty-fifth street was, is a continued N O I to demolish and reconstruct a single-family home. Uh, that was approved thus presented. Uh, Chrissy Rock, uh, sixty-seven and sixty-nine Newbury Turnpike. An N O I to remove a play area from a bordering, red, vindicated wetland to relocate, uh, play area and to reconfigure some stormwater features on the site. That was, uh, approved, uh, with a condition that I did not write down. Elizabeth Atrolic, an N O I to replace, uh, existing sanitary disposal system, um, that was approved. Uh, it was an R D A, uh, forty-five Northern Ave, Terry Litters, to replenish, uh, some boost on, it was boost on chips actually. An existing driveway, uh, that was approved with a, uh, a condition that she provides some measurements to the, uh, conservation office, which she was gonna do. Um, we had, uh, certificates of compliance approved for seventy-two Old Point Road and for eleven fifty-fourth street. Um, we also had another one approved subject to inspection for five fourteenth street. And there was one granted on five fourteenth street, uh, the five fourteenth street was the one where they had to do an N O I to bring a property in compliance with a previous order of conditions. And so they're getting all that together right now, they're good. And then there's a special meeting to, to discuss some herbicide treatment of invasive species on Kents Island off Fay Street. And that meeting is going to happen on July twenty-ninth, it's a CONCON meeting. And that was much quicker than it went last night. That's where we are. So.
That's Pat Hopper, she hasn't been.
Yes, well, yeah, division of fish and wildlife, I made mass division of fish and wildlife. Okay, so.
Also, most invasion of species, purple weed.
Um, I don't know, so they, they didn't really get into that.
I know this.
It was more of, um, a procedural error that had happened that was, um, being discussed more so than the actual action that they're proposing. So, and your Z B A?
It's not maybe, it's more like.
Z B A is done. Now I'm actually planning, what about you?
Nothing, that was, uh, yeah, nothing since our last meeting. Actually, no, no commission meetings until September.
Yeah.
And take the summer off. I will say we are working on the map updates, I might have mentioned that before, our assessors' map updates and parcel data updates. They have the, the maps and, and, um, the, the map changes, so they'll start inputting all of that stuff. It's a process.
Okay. And do we pretty much do the wireless?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add on, on that at the moment.
Everybody has any thoughts? Any thoughts on wireless? Control.
Get the more, get more information, uh, before we go forward.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, but this, this contractor sounded like they were doing what we needed to have done. That, um, it's in the, in the packet, the, I said, I said, oh.
So, I think I might go in and Google them and see, Martha said that they had, uh, worked with a lot of different towns just to see who they had worked with. Yeah, I can actually send you a list, um, I can't remember what they, what they called it, it was some funny, funny word, but they, they're part of three, three projects in Newbury, I don't know if they've done the working on behalf of wireless companies that were sitting here, that's my assumption. So, so I think they, they work on both sides, so.
Are we done with old business? Go off to new business?
I think so.
Alright, well, as you may, may not know.
Yeah.
Things go as, as planned, I would be relocating to the state of Florida. And so while I'm not resigning my position on the planning board tonight, um, it seemed to be prudent to, uh, do some reorganizing and, and ensure that the board can carry on, uh, for whenever I leave, so. Having just gone through a transition where I was, uh, main chair and thinking very much about how to make this beneficial transition. My thoughts are that with the exception of George, who has the most experience and has served as vice chair and has continually provided us with, uh, guidance and wisdom and, you know, historic perspective, that the rest of us are really quite in the board. And so I was trying to figure out what the best way to go forward to utilize all of our skills, the skills that we seem to be preventing, you know, presenting at, uh, our meetings and also to figure out how to move the board forward. And, um, I think the best way to do that would be to make the members move up into the, the board official positions. And so I'm going to make a motion to elect Pete Pankos as chair of the planning board, uh, to elect Larry Murphy as vice chair of the planning board and to elect Leslie Matthews as secretary of the planning board.
Clerk.
Or be clerk, I'm sorry, secretary clerk. So, um.
I'll second that motion.
For all of them or should we go one by one?
I don't know, is it one by one?
The, the board is done in both ways, so I think whatever everybody feels comfortable with.
One motion.
One, one motion for all.
Any discussion?
Is there a second? Second.
We got it.
Yep. No discussion?
No discussion.
Oh, discussion.
Yes, first I'd like to thank you for that articulation and that forward-thinking you're here this portion of. That's the first one, the second point is I want to thank you for being the chair and jumping into a situation that you didn't wanna jump into. You jumped into and you negotiated and handled it really solidly.
Thank you.
And, uh, you were sensitive and aware of that, so I apologize.
Nice, second, uh, kind of very nice job in a very short period of time.
Thank you. And also the, also that thinking was to us, it was that I didn't think that we should overburden our planning board doodle with the administrative career that now comes with these positions and it's, that there is a fair amount of that, so. Thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you all, I'll still be here until I pee.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have to have a party. Party's a good.
Alright, so.
Did we take a vote on that motion or a vote?
Well, we have to vote, I thought it would be good. Alright, all in favor?
Alright. All thumbs.
Alright, then we have to vote on signatory authority. Oh, the Z B A liaison. Okay, the, the planning board, um, CONCON, we're gonna cut off to the next meeting. Um, just because I'm still there. Um, but I think, uh, I think you would, uh, voice an interest in taking that on.
Well, after a seizure, it's like a last.
At least most, most of those are gone now, you know, that's the good news.
It's a social go for it to go that long, I think.
It, it, it depends because there, the last time we had a long one, there were a lot of projects. And this time there were probably half the projects, but two of them just get. What can you do, you know, it's just the way it goes sometimes, so. And then we have, um, we need someone to step up if they went to the Z B A liaison. So, is anybody interested in doing that?
Well, I don't have a liaison position, but George has been doing that, are you, are you?
Probably willing to give that.
You're sure of it, you're sure. Well, I, yeah, I, as I say, I don't have a liaison assignment, so if, if George is happy to, willing to let that go, I'll, I'll be more.
So is that we have to vote or do we vote to recommend to this?
You know, it's, it's, it's kind of an unofficial position, it used to be very unofficial for a while, it was an appointed position, um, so I think that it would probably be good for the board to take a vote on it at least and then I can check and see how the powers that be would like to, to handle it, to make it official or less, so. Cause it's been both over time.
We have a motion.
Second. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Congratulations.
I said, no. I voted you already. No.
All right, good, thank you. All right, now we go to signatory authority.
Right, and that's, that's two things. One is signatory authority for invoices and payroll, and we have, um, traditionally done both, you know, primary and then secondary. If the primary is not around to actually sign, because you can't sign payroll invoices, that's a bad thing.
Yeah.
And the other is, uh, signatory for A and R plans, and, and most recently, uh, we've had two people for that as well.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea.
Yeah, again, if somebody's gone, we don't wanna hold up an applicant if, if the plan can't be signed, if it's endorsed.
Well, if we continue with the way we've been doing it, then it would be the chair that has the signatory, uh, primary authority and the vice chair would have the alternate authority.
Right.
All right, so, I guess, we need a motion, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
So. Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
All right, so that was for primary, for, well, that was for both.
Uh, if you want it to be for both, you can have it be for both.
It's for both.
Okay.
Wanna do a separate one for A and R plans, or do you wanna?
I don't know, it might be cleaner actually if you do it for the A and R plans.
We have a motion to make the chair the primary and the vice chair the alternate signatory for the A and R plans.
Second.
Have a second?
Second, Leslie, do it.
Oh, thanks, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
So. Okay, so I will, um, uh, next time or sometime in between, if I see you all, have to do another signature sheet for the registry with the new signatures for the A and R plans. For the moment, we're okay because you're on it anyway, so if you sign wrong, it's not an issue.
Doesn't change my signature just so much.
What, not the doctor's signature?
There's a micay to be one for the next meeting anyways.
Well, I can stop at any time, Martha, if you need me to.
Okay. Thank you.
So. Anything else anybody wants to talk about? Anybody know how to pack a pod?
Okay.
Hopefully. All in favor?